Alright, so quiet in here. Yeah.
They're ready to go.
They are. So because it's a public meeting, we have to wait until 5:30 to begin, so we'll begin in about a minute and a half. Alright, it is just after 5:30 PM and it is Monday, January 22, 2024. And this is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'll pause to ask Superintendent Wimmer just to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please join me in rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. So next on our agenda is approval of our agenda, which was circulated in advance. I would move to approve this agenda, is there a second?
Second.
We'll give that one to Kelly, thank you. Motion and second to approve the agenda, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any oppose? That motion carries, and I should have noted for the record that all seven members of our school board are present. So with that, we will move to public participation, and I have one public participation comment card. So what we'll do is, according to Board Policy 187, I will make the president's announcement, and then we will invite forward Ms. Jody Geenan for speaking. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures of this segment, I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are also available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name and relation to the district, this information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as a guarantee of fair and timely response. So I'll now invite our participant forward to speak, and there is a visible timer to help manage your time, and also to help ensure that our participant is heard and that this meeting runs efficiently, please abstain from conversation, comment, or applause either during or after the public participation comments. So Ms. Geenan, please come forward. On your participant comment card, you've indicated that you're a resident of the district, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, and if you could state your name according to the board policy, and then the next three minutes are yours.
Jody Geenan, from West Bend. I'm here regarding the Quarter Three Book Hub lists for 7th grade as well as the high school English II and III classes. Quite frankly, I am appalled, while I am encouraged that our school district is trying to be more transparent about the inappropriateness of the books we offer as part of our curriculum, the descriptions are not informative enough in their warnings to parents. These book hub lists are part of the curriculum since the students must choose one of the books from the list to read, participate in student-led discussions while teachers float around checking on groups, as one teacher put it last year, and perhaps write a paper or do a project concerning the chosen book. The Kite Runner and the 57 Bus, which are both shelved in the adult section of our public library, providing more protection than our school district, and have been suspended in this school district, are still on these book lists. As a reminder, the Kite Runner is only three ranks below Fifty Shades of Grey on the ALA's most challenged list of public school library books. None of the books on the English III book list are a light read. Is this unit mandatory, or can a student choose books from another list if these books are more violent or sexual than the student or parents can withstand? On the English II list, Concrete Rose by Angie Thomas, one of the most challenged authors in schools, in Book Looks, the content warning on the opening page says you are about to access material that may contain content of adult nature, if you are under age 18, please exit now. Book Looks reports on a high profanity count, including the F-bond 16 times exceeds the permitted amount of obscenity and sexual contact for West Bend School District readers. In 7th grade, the books that stick out as troubling are The Inheritance by Varian Johnson, where the secondary character explores sexuality. Why are we going there in 7th grade when the students are dealing with puberty and are already confused? Even Human Growth and Development determined this is not an appropriate age for the type of discussion. All We Have Left by Wendy Mills, and The Memory of Things by Gay Pulsner, which both note exceed vulgarity limits set by the school board, including the F-word and derivatives. Remember that movies are rated R if the F-word is used more than twice. Shouldn't we be more protected than movie theaters? Between, especially for 7th graders, between Shades of Grey, Milkweed, Grenade and Prisoner B, Fire from the Rock are all art for sexual content and graphic violence, of which most are noted on the permission form as exceeding the limits set by the school board in these areas of concern. Is there really, is this really the best we can do? The books are justified because they are popular amongst the students. Even if heroin, opiates, alcohol, or violence are popular with the students, we wouldn't promote them. Our community has a responsibility to protect children and minors, not traumatize them or allow them to harm themselves or others under our watch. What happens outside of school may not be our concern, but what we offer students at school is our concern. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That is our only participant tonight, so we'll move on to our next agenda item then, and that is our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have a number of items, minutes of the January 8th, 2024 regular board meeting and executive session, 15 contracts, two resignations, and two retirements. I believe that concludes the content of the consent agenda. I would move to approve this consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie, we have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That motion carries, thank you. Next, we come to the reports section, and tonight we have a school report for Silverbrook. And I have Dr. Quinn Trueblood is kind of kicking this off, but I understand we've got an exciting format and some special guests, so, alright.
We're ready to go, I think the Silverbrook team can take it from here, we have Mr. Ralph Principal and Mrs. Gelnick, Assistant Principal, and a whole team, and a lot of people, I'm pretty sure that includes everyone.
Great, welcome.
Go ahead, Colin.
I'm Jackson Mosi.
And I'm Lily Wandra. Normally, we host Silverbrook livestream digital announcements each week on Thursday mornings. However, tonight we are here to share information about our school, Silverbrook Intermediate School, with help of some of our Silverbrook staff.
Before we get started, we want to know our mission every day is to empower all of our students to be successful learners.
If we are empowered, it means we are stronger and more confident learners, and our teachers and staff help us do that.
Now, here's our principal, Ms. Durrell, and our assistant principal, Ms. Gelnick, to share some information about Silverbrook's school improvement plan and how it is working.
Alright, thanks you guys. First of all, I'd like to thank members of the Silverbrook Building Leadership Team, who are sitting in back of me for being here tonight to support and share what we're doing. I'd also like to thank our digital announcements team and their families to come, for coming out tonight to help with this presentation. Besides Jackson and Lily, who you've met, we have Colin filming our presentation back here like he does each week, Jay Leea running the slideshow, and Sean helping her do that as well. We literally couldn't do it without you, so thanks for being here. So as you can see on this slide, the district pyramid continues to be the guide that we use to facilitate our improvement plans at Silverbrook. As you can see, the goals and initiatives we chose for our improvement plan are aligned to each one of the parts of the pyramid. That includes increasing the number of students who are proficient in reading and math by 5%, increasing staff school commitment by 5%, increasing the percentage of students with zero to one major referrals, and increasing the number of students who report like they feel like they belong, getting that up to 90% or higher. This also includes the effective and efficient block that our elementary colleagues covered with you in fall when they talked about our professional learning communities, building leadership team structure, and student services team and what they do.
Alright, so a spotlight of some of our leading strategies we're using at Silverbrook. After analyzing our state report card, we learned that the target group outcomes, or otherwise noted as TGO, group is doubly counted. These are students in the bottom quartile for reading and math, in addition to the students with intellectual disabilities who take the alternate state test. We have created groups in EduClima for our TGO group. We've worked with staff on building an understanding of what TGO is and used our professional learning communities to develop strategies to implement with this group of students. We make sure our TGO students are involved in small groups, which take place in literacy and math classes, and are starting to grow now in other classes like science, social studies, Spanish, and art. Student goal setting is another strategy that we foster in classes as we plan and prepare for STAR and Forward testing. We also offer over 20 clubs and co-curriculars for students to enhance student engagement. In addition, we have a group called the Viking Volunteers that has 168 students signed up for second semester. This group of students, the Viking Volunteers, help all around our building with deliveries, classroom setups, sweeping the cafeteria, and much more.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Durrell and Ms. Gelnick.
Today's birthdays are Journey Singer Steve Perry, DJ Jazzy Jeff from The Fresh Prince of Bel Air, and Chef Guy Fadi. Happy birthday to those famous people.
Now, here is our literacy specialist, Mr. Spath, sixth literacy teacher, Ms. Dove, and Mr. Dornick from Sixth Yale to talk about our, talk about our mid-year learning data from STAR for reading and math, and things we are doing to continue to grow as learners.
Thank you, Jackson. We are excited to share our progress in literacy. Our goal is 5% based on last spring's Forward score. Using the STAR data, the number of students scoring advanced or proficient has grown in 5th grade from 53% in fall to 57% in winter. Our 6th graders grew from 42% advanced and proficient in fall to 47% in winter.
On our portion of the site improvement plan, we have identified a few key strategies to continue to move students forward. We set goals with all students at Silverbrook. We look specifically at our target group outcome students. We have aligned our schedule to allow for push-in intervention to happen during class, as well as small groups for all students using teaching staff, our paraprofessionals, our interventionists, and special education teachers. We are working with our social studies teacher colleagues to intentionally connect reading and writing exercises with our literacy classrooms. We look forward to students' continued growth at Silverbrook.
Math has also made some nice progress. Our goal in math is an improvement of 5%. Using the STAR data, the number of students scoring advanced and proficient has grown in 5th grade from 40% in fall to 51% in winter, and our 6th graders grew from 32% advanced and proficient in fall up to 44% in winter. For the math portion of our school improvement plan, we also have students' goals set for the STAR and Forward tests. We focus on the target group outcome students, and we use our end-of-class cooldown exit tickets to form our small groups that we use in class. We also have aligned our small group time to allow for push-in intervention. We look forward to continued growth from our students in math.
That was really interesting, Mr. Spath, Mr. Dornick, and Ms. Dove.
And now it's time for the joke of the day. Where does the snowman get his news report?
I don't know, where?
The Winter Net. Ms. Noiser from Five Purple is up next to talk about what is happening with the staff and family engagement.
In the area of engagement and customer satisfaction, we use the district engagement survey results to identify some target areas. So in employee engagement, our goal is by the end of 2023-24 school year, Silverbrook will increase school commitment area from 69% to 74% as measured by that district survey. So in order to do that, we are focusing specifically on staff commitment. In the fall, we created a survey to give staff to get more specific feedback on what they considered when thinking about their staff, their commitment to Silverbrook. So we're now working on developing some action steps based on those themes, and those are in the areas of workload and student behavior. In addition, we're also working on family engagement, so we are in the process of developing a family engagement survey that will be deployed in a few weeks. After that, our team will take that back, we'll analyze those results, and we'll create some action steps to grow family engagement as well.
That was, thank you, Ms. Noiser, that sounds like there is some important work going on there. And here's Jay Leea telling us about the weather. We will have a low of 29 degrees tonight with some snow showers and light winds. We make, we should have snowfall of around one inch. Make sure to bundle up and drive safely.
And here's Ms. Pease, our school psychologist, to talk about our Tier Two behavior data and how Viking Pride is making a difference for that. She is also talking about our belonging data.
Thank you. Most of our students have zero or one major referrals this school year. In 5th grade, 97% of students have zero or one major referrals, and in 6th grade, it's 95%. Just like in the academic areas, we have many strategies in place to help students learn the behavioral expectations at Silverbrook. We intentionally teach what is expected in all areas of the building. School rules are posted throughout the building, and they're in the assignment notebooks. When needed, we reteach at the building, grade, house, class, or individual level. Our Viking Pride Tier One team consistently shares data trends with staff and designs school-wide strategies to teach students about expectations. Our student services team looks at data weekly and works with our PBIS Tier Two data team to identify interventions for students that have been having repeated difficulties learning and demonstrating expectations. I'll also talk a little bit about student belonging. 92% of our students surveyed in November reported a sense of belonging at Silverbrook. Again, we intentionally put in place strategies to build a positive climate at Silverbrook. I'm just going to highlight a few of those strategies. We greet students by name at the beginning of each class, and we end with an optimistic closure. We're in the hallways during transitions greeting students. As Mrs. Gelnick mentioned, we have a wide variety of school clubs for students to join. Camp is an activity that obviously builds house and school belonging, and the teaming that occurs in our house and key structure promotes community and belonging. For the students that did not report a sense of belonging, we are teaming to identify strategies to help students feel connected.
Thank you, Ms. Pease, it looks like we're really on track to reaching those behavior goals.
And now for our inspirational quote. "If you want to fly, let go of everything that weighs you down." Our final slide has some fun pictures from this school year. They include pictures from camp, our noetic math contest winners, small group reading, the 5th grade band concert, and Mr. L. being taped to a wall, and our state honor choir students.
Thanks for letting us present tonight, we had a lot of fun. We hope to have a great rest of your board meeting. Go Silverbrook Vikings!
I'll say very, very, very well done. I think this is the first time, at least that I've been on the board, that we've had a presentation like this. And I'll just say one thing. I thought you were very, very cool, calm, and collected. And there are many, many adults over the years who come and present to us that are really, really nervous. You have a fantastic skill, you need to keep building it, that is amazing, being able to present comfortably in front of a group. Congratulations, really appreciated your time tonight, thank you so much. We're now going to see if there are any questions that the board has for, you know, for our faculty and administration. Any questions, board members, on anything, any of the information that was presented tonight?
I don't, I don't have a question, I just wanted to share, I was at, on Tuesday, last Tuesday, I was at Silverbrook, had a chance to spend a couple of hours there, going around the school, meeting the teachers, the staff, the backroom staff, got to talk to a bunch of students and see how the different classes were working, and I was extremely impressed, not just with the staff, but with the students as well. All of the students were engaged in the classrooms, working in groups, working individually, working quietly, participating, I saw some, some people giving some talks from the front of the room. Went into a science class, was asked some really excellent questions. I was very impressed by that, and I, I was just, it'd been a long time since I'd been at Silverbrook with my own kids, and I just want to say I was very impressed with the facilities and with how, how things were being run there, and how, how the teachers were engaging with their students. The technology was cool to see, using the voice enhancements for both the staff and the students. And I was very impressed, so I, I just want to say that I have no doubt that these numbers are reflective of how things are going there, so, and continuing to improve, I'm sure.
Other questions, observations, thoughts? Go ahead.
I just have one more, I have to pile on Dr. Temez's comments. I had a son, Kyle, go through Silverbrook, and a daughter, Megan, go through Silverbrook, and I just gotta, and my daughter is home from Madison, and we watched videos, not on cameras, old camera videos on tapes, four, and 20 of them in the last 20 days, I believe, every night until 1:00 in the morning, anyway. We had memories at Green Tree in Silverbrook, and it's great to see the memories continue, and I loved the presentation. I do have to call out my son and daughters, one of our top three teachers is in the corner, Mr. Dornick on math, installed the passion in math and helped them tremendously through school, and thanks to the other teachers here, and thanks to the leadership. So I just want to say, you've got a great school, take advantage of all the opportunities.
I'll just ask one, one question, we talked about in the strategy, so push-in intervention. For members of the public who might not know what this is, can you describe what that is?
So one of our leading philosophies is small groups at our schools, so all kids get what they need. So our advanced kids, our striving kids, and that includes kids who normally would receive intervention, maybe in a pull-out type of model. So in ours, we've developed a schedule where interventionists are able to push into the classroom during that small group time. So everybody's in some kind of group during that time, so those kids aren't, you know, pulled out or separated from their peers. It happens within the classroom where everybody's comfortable and can learn best, and that's really a credit, again, to all these guys for putting those schedules together, for making that happen every day in class. And that, like I said, is really a leading reason for our data doing what it's doing right now and moving in a positive direction.
Thank you. Alright.
Just one other thing, as, as we engage further in our discussions around future needs for buildings and settings, academic settings, one of the things I noticed when I was there was, as that being one of our most recently updated buildings, I absolutely saw the impact that having up-to-date facilities, equipment, flexible furniture, flexible seating, which I thought really, I mean, different, different options for students' needs, for students who needed to sit in a stool versus sit in a chair, or have little rocking, rocker chairs, or rocker seats. There was a lot of cool options and flexibility that did not disrupt the classroom. It wasn't chaotic like I thought maybe all of the different furniture would be, it was really meeting different needs, and so I think that's something really cool that we can look at going forward as we look at how to design, you know, and what our needs are in the future, even just with the bright lights in all the rooms, so, that was, that was very cool.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for coming tonight, we really appreciate it, and to our, especially to our student presenters. Keep up the great work, and we're very, very pleased to have you here as guests. So next, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, and this is a public meeting, so we always welcome everybody to stay, but we also know it's a school night, and so we are not going to be offended if anyone needs to, needs to leave. So we'll just pause for a second while, while you folks are able to gather yourselves. Thank you again for coming.
Good luck to you.
Alright.
So I think Superintendent Wimmer has loaded up the presentation, because we're going to be shifting gears to our next item, which is facilities assessment, building and site conditions budgets, from Findorf, and we have Findorf representatives here tonight. So for members of our public, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah, they'll, they'll introduce themselves as they come up.
Perfect.
So I'll kick it off, though, I'm Kyle A., Director of Project Management with Findorf, and I'll be half the team, ready to kick off the presentation for the budgets that we did for the building and site conditions currently at the district. So of course, we want this to be more conversational, so along the way, if you have any questions, please, you know, let it, let us know, makes it a little easier in that way. So the agenda that we have tonight, though, first off, we'll have Erica kick it off and give us really the status of where we are in the long-range facility planning process. Then Ryan and Jordan will go through the, the current budgeting effort that they've been going through with the facility assessment that was done by the architect, EUA, and they'll close it out with some next steps. Hand it off to Erica next.
Thank you. Hello, Erica Freeman, I'm a Communications and Planning Lead with Findorf. So on the slide, and hopefully on your computers, you can see that funnel graphic that we've brought to you a couple of times, first one Epstein Unit Architects presented, and also when Baird presented in earlier this month. And it's just helping to orient you where we are in the process. So at the top, that large orange bar is the facilities assessment, and within that bar, you'll see that there's three components of the assessment. So it's important to state that tonight, we are only sharing costs or budgets for one portion of all three of the assessment. And as we move through the process, you'll see directly underneath facilities assessment is community engagement, you'll see that in three areas. That's something that we talked about before, which we will close on, as well as what does that look like? But as we start to narrow and get through But as we start to narrow and get through priorities and solutions, that's when different options are going to be presented. So just to orient you tonight is really just focus on those maintenance and the budget and the site, for the conditions and site. And then one more slide. This is also something that EUA brought forward in one of their presentations. It's those guiding principles that's really helping you as a board lean back into as we go through this process. As you review costs tonight, as you see different potential priorities and solutions that are narrowed through engagement, it's for you as a board and administration to reflect back on and ensuring that our potential options or solutions safe, secure, and accessible, welcoming, well-maintained, and operationally efficient, and adaptable to meet evolving student needs. So that's just some guideposts for you to keep in mind as we present costs this evening. And I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Ryan Trekel, Project Manager here at Findorf. My main role for the project team is serving as the main point of contact for EUA and the district. I'll go ahead and get started talking about the building conditions and the general overview. So what we have up here on the screen is the facilities assessment scorecard that EUA had presented on here last month. I just wanted to throw that up as a quick reminder of kind of what that looks like and put that into perspective as we go through the numbers here. Just want to make a quick, a quick comment on thanking the team over at the district, Tim and Dave and their team, along with the team over at EUA for all their hard work and collaboration that went into putting this all together. There was a lot of information that was there to digest, but there was many meetings and line items that went into putting this all together. Just one quick comment on the table here. The color schemes are consistent with the facilities assessment that EUA put together along with our presentation that we have here. So we got the red identified as the priorities of the district and we go out to 15 years identified with the green. So hopefully that helps you as you dissect the information, but again, just wanted to be consistent with the information that we're providing you. How we broke this up for our budgeting buckets, per se, we broke it up into four categories. So we have the first category there being the building envelope and the roofs. So essentially, anything that keeps the weather out of your buildings. So examples of that include your exterior windows, your doors, the roof, and your brick facade. The next category we got is the interiors. Anything inside the building, such as the flooring, ceiling, casework finishes, paint, and drywall. The third category that we used is the site, so anything outside of the building. Examples of that include your athletic fields, your asphalt, your sidewalk, and playground equipment. And then last but not least, the building systems, so your mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and in some cases, your fire protection system. This is something that your public does not always see about your buildings, but again, it's a vital part of your building to keep that up and running the way it should be and to keep your children in your schools learning at the best they can. Up on the screen here, we just have a few examples of some items that were identified through our site walks. I'm going to use Ralph's as an example for explaining our budgeting process. So as you can see at the bottom of that, that photo there, there's some evidence of rusting. What this process is meant to be is identifying needs throughout your buildings that need to get fixed. So in this case, something that's not uncommon for a door in Wisconsin to have is some rust there with assault. What this process is, again, just identifying the need and coming up with a solution. So in this case, there might be an option where we prep and paint to mitigate the more, the need for more rusting to happen, or in some cases, we replace the door with mint-like materials. So what this process is, is replacing that door with a hollow metal door. What the next options that we're going to be looking at here in the future are replacing that with an FRP door that a long-term solution would be replacing that with, which is a common thing that now buildings and school districts are doing for their long-term needs for their buildings. The next slide here is just photos of the interiors of your buildings, followed with the site, couple photos of your asphalt and your athletic fields over there at the high school. And then finally, photos of your building systems, stuff that, again, people don't always get to see throughout your buildings, but are critical in your building operation. Giving a general overview of our budgeting process, again, our budgets were developed using EUA's facilities assessment. That was the main resource that we used as we went through our process here and also with collaboration with the district here. Our site walks that we performed were non-invasive. We weren't digging up foundations. We weren't getting into tearing apart ceilings or anything like that, but just want to note again, unforeseen conditions still may exist. A couple items for what our estimates are based on. So we have an extensive project history and we use similar project size to compile our budgets. Along with what Jordan is going to talk about here shortly is our pre-con department currently closely monitors the current market conditions along with the estimated current future inflation. And then lastly, budgets do not include, what Erica had mentioned before, our budgets do not include any capacity or education, educational adequacy needs. Any questions so far? Okay. I will turn it over to Jordan to start talking numbers.
Thank you. I am Jordan Landerman, Preconstruction Manager at Findorf. My job is to help facilitate the budgeting process and the bidding process prior to construction starting. So with that being said, you know, what I also like to do is facilitate or to manage expectations so that what you're expecting to get is what we're pricing. And so what I'd like to go through is what our budgets are and also what our budgets are not. And then also provide a little bit of context to the scale of the school district, which is pretty substantial. So when you're looking at numbers, you're putting that into context with the size of the school. So what the budgets are, they are conceptual in scope, or currently, they're conceptual in scope, and also based on the current conditions that EUA provided within that facility assessment report. So conceptually, most people can understand that a roof needs to be replaced over time. That's a conceptual budget. We don't have specific items that we're looking at, pitch pockets or, you know, a roof curb. These are conceptually big, big areas that we're looking at in certain cases. And then current conditions, based on what the assessment report was, if we have a hailstorm in July, we don't have that figured in here. So anything has to be current based on what that report is. Things outside of that, we don't have that. Consistent with costs on similar scopes of work, so as Ryan said, we're keeping an eye on what the current markets are. We're doing a lot of work in the southeast Wisconsin region. We have a pretty good understanding of where those costs are, and those are reflected within the budgets here. Inclusive of anticipated inflation, so we're including a 5% annual inflation that's based off of industry, what we're seeing in the industry right now as a trend, and we don't see that curtailing in the foreseeable future. Comprehensive total project costs, you know, we're figuring in, if we have something to maintain, we're putting in the materials, installation, equipment requirements, you know, if there's any associated fees and risk assessment contingencies, we're packaging that in so that this is an all-in cost to maintain a particular item within the budget. Also, the expected, or sorry, the estimated lifespan of equipment. If your roof has a 20-year lifespan and it's only 10 years old, we're not recommending that you replace it today. But it will be in the budget 10 years from now with the inflation factored into it so that you do have an understanding that 10 years from now, this may need to be replaced and you have an understanding what that cost will be. What our budgets are not is that they are not final construction or detailed estimates. We don't have those details currently. They're not based on defined scope of work or final designs. Final designs would be, we would consider construction documents, and that's something that the architect would provide at a later time with exact specifications. We are basing our budgets off of conceptual ideas and scopes of work. And final bids, again, we don't have final bids from subcontractors. That's something that we would get after receiving construction documents so that we could put them out to bid competitively, or if there was a ticket put in for a specific warranty or an item that the school district would send in. That would be a bid that you would get from a contractor or a subcontractor. So moving on from there, building and site details. So this is the context. You know, there's 10 buildings that were in the assessment report, and the list of them is on the left-hand column. The second column goes through the square footage, the gross square footage. The gross square footage is defined by a perimeter around the exterior of the building, and that area contained within that is the gross square footage of the building. Overall, the district has about 1.2 million square feet of buildings, and that's equivalent to 660 average-sized Wisconsin homes that would fit within the confines of those walls. That's a pretty substantial area. The site size and acreage that you're maintaining is 185 acres. Square foot-wise, there's 43,560 square feet per acre, which is a lot of square feet. I think a better way to conceptualize that is that's about 139 football fields worth of site that you have to maintain over the next 15 years. The construction dates is on the fourth column of when the building was originally, or at least the original portion of the building was created. The newest building is Rolfe's at 1989. And then the oldest school is Jackson Elementary, which was built in 1915. The average of all of the buildings is roughly 70 years old when they were originally built. And then we have a list of when major innovations or additions happened throughout that lifetime on the final slide. All right, so now, what everybody came for is the numbers. So before we dive into the numbers, you know, there's going to be a lot of numbers thrown out here over the next 10 slides. So if you have questions, obviously, I, I welcome them, but if you can hold off on some of the numbers, it may be answered in the next 10 slides if you have specific items. And I'm not going to go through every single number, otherwise we might be here for several hours. But just, I'd like to give you a kind of a heads up on how to read the different graphs that we have in here. So this one in particular, as we said, we're following the same color trend as what EUA's facility assessment report put together with the red to green. And then on the X-axis, you can see the years from 2024 to 2039, well, it's 2038, actually. And then the dollar amounts on the left-hand side, which starts at $0 and goes up from there. Now, this is a 15-year plan, maintenance plan, and it's broken up, this particular graph is broken up into individual years or groups of years. And, next one. Now, from that district-wide overall numbers, we've further broken it down from the indicated years to each one of the schools per indicated year. There's a lot of work that, like, unique maintenance items that individual schools have. This isn't a broad brush. Everything gets the exact same work. Each school has its own unique maintenance needs. And so this chart here helps break down what those costs are on an annual basis or in the bucket of years that are required. Now...
Sorry, can I just ask a clarifying question, just, just so I, just so I understand? Maybe we can skip to the prior, to the prior slide. So when we talk about budget, this isn't a referendum, referendum budget. We're talking about existing facilities, kind of maintaining them as they are, so to speak.
Correct.
I characterize this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, as this is really a budget to say, if we wanted to catch up on whatever maintenance we're behind on, that's maybe what's in the red, perhaps. But also, you're looking forward to saying, well, you don't need to fix this roof right now, like you had mentioned in the example, but you're probably going to need to do it five years from now. And in theory, hypothetically, that cost would appear in the five years from now column. Is that correct? I mean, is that, that's what I, so this is not tearing down a building and rebuilding it. It's basically if there was a wall there, you're going to have a wall. If there was a parking lot there, you're going to have a parking lot. But you're dividing it really by time into, for maintenance, what we would need in theory to catch up on and what we're facing going forward.
Correct. So if it was in the, in the dark green slot, it would have inflation adjusted for the next 10 to 15 years. So what that cost to replace the roof today is amortized out 15 years with inflation. So you're, that 56 million is a real cost of what it will be down the road.
And that's, and that's important. I'm glad you brought that up because that's future dollars, so it's more expensive. If we did it now, it would be cheaper, but not saying we have to do it all. We can say, well, let's wait and do it in the future. But if we do, then it's going to be more expensive. That's how prices go. But that, so we're really looking at this, I mean, that time dimension is very, very important here, I think. And so just wanted to be sure that I understood it before we got in, deep into the numbers, so.
Correct. And with 5% interest, it doubles in 15 years.
Absolutely.
So it's, it's good to...
Thank you.
Send it to mine.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt your flow there.
Oh, that's all right. By all means. So this, this chart here, working with Tim and Dave, you know, they have a real understanding that there's always going to be maintenance needs and upkeep required at the buildings. As long as you have buildings, they're going to have to be constantly maintained and kept up. So what they requested was a 15-year assessment to get a long-term strategy or plan of what the costs are to maintain these buildings, but also have a focus, which is what we highlighted here, what's looking at you in the near term, in the next five years. So we've broken those years out a little more granularly. So in the first year, in the red, we have 2024, which is just a year on its own, which is $28.5 million. And then we have a two-year grouping, which is '25 and '26, which is a little over 77 million. And then another two-year grouping for '27 and '28 at about 29, almost 29.5 million. And then the final two are from 2029 to 2033, and then 2034 to 2038, which would be that 56 million. So those are two five-year buckets. And then again, this is a tool, we're not making any specific recommendations. This is something that, you know, the school district and the community can, will have to analyze and come up with solutions on. This was more of a tool put together so that, moving forward, you can make more informed decisions, you know, with the information provided here. And so I guess with that, I'll kick it back over to Ryan.
Thanks, Jordan.
Maybe I can just interject a question really quick, just to follow up on your other point. So because we see the numbers 2024, and especially in that '25, '26 bucket, that's a big, that's a big number. That seems to be reflective in my mind that we're talking about the kind of that catching up on deferred maintenance. In theory, if we were maybe caught up on it and we're planning ahead, yes, there'd be higher numbers in the future because of inflation, but it might be a little bit more smoothed out. I mean, would, would you agree that, that '24, '25, '26 is largely reflective of we have to catch up on some deferred maintenance?
Yeah. You know, with the numbers that, you know, as they came out, you know, the initial years, 28.5 million, you know, from 2027 to '28, it's down to about 14.5, almost 15 million dollars a year. And then you go out to that 10- to 15-year range, and you're closer to about 9.5 million a year. So, and that's with inflation adjusted, added on to there. So you do see attending, you know, traversing down as you take care of a lot of big-ticket items upfront.
Chad?
Yep. So, excuse me, I just wanted to also clarify. So if I'm doing the math on this, and I just want to have it in my head this way, if we added up those five columns on the bottom, you get, and then divide it by 15 years, you get roughly 15 million a year, 15.3 million per year averaged out. Is that, so at that cost, if we were to have 15 million a year in maintenance over the course of 15 years, when we reached 15 years, that would have kept our buildings up to current good condition? That would keep us in the green on your workflow? Is that what you're suggesting? That if, if we were to budget this and just get this all taken care of?
Yes.
That in 15 years, all of our buildings would be in the green category?
Well, you're still going to have maintenance items that'll be required. So, you know, talking with Tim and Dave, water heater was a, was an issue that sounds like with some of the hard water issues in West Bend, that every seven to eight years, you need to replace... you need to replace water heater. So just because you replaced that water heater today, seven years from now, it's going to be in the red again.
Sure.
In 2034 and 39. So there will be items that you're going to have to replace multiple times within that 15-year span. But in general, it's, it is a ongoing process.
That keeps us up to, up to date with newer equipment and everything working, functioning properly. That's what this would suggest.
Right. To maintain your current building, that, that doesn't include any furniture.
Right. That's nothing, nothing new. That's just the structures, the facilities. Okay. I just wanted to.
Yeah. And to piggyback on that comment, so we use that example of the water heater during our meetings with Dave and Tim. Those are the kind of things that we made notes of, of, okay, your water heaters are trending more towards seven, eight years versus 10 years. So that is captured in all these numbers. So this might happen in 27, 28.
Sure.
But also, it's captured again to make sure that we're realizing what's typical in your district.
And this might be a question that I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot, Andy, but what is our approximate current annual budget for maintenance? Two million? Okay. So we're about 13 million a year behind.
That's that Fund 41 that we talked about where we put money in, a little under two.
Okay. Sure. Thank you. Just to give myself an idea of what the needs are versus what we're currently budgeting. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. So again, we've sliced, sliced and diced this information on all these numbers a bunch of different ways. So going back to my previous slides here on the categories, so here we have it broken out graphically. You can see that your interiors and your systems, part of your buildings are the highest amount of money here, which is not uncommon for schools, just with the vast amount of space that you guys have on the interior wise, those numbers add up. And then, of course, your systems, which are, again, are vital to your building, their numbers there. Next slide we got, again, we have it broken out in, with a table identifying the first five years there. We have it broken out by building, the four categories there on the left as well. So again, just another, another way of showing the information here. The next table we have is, we are breaking it out by category on the top there, and then we have it by building. And then it adds up there at the end on the bottom of the screen. And then the next handful of slides here, finally, the next five, we have it broken it out by each section of the years. So here we have it broken out by, again, by building and by, by category. And to, to go to your question, Chris, of you invest in your schools here, you can see that the, the years here in 2024 year investment that you guys made a few years ago on Silverbrook and Badger are paying off. But then, as we get further down the line here, you can see those numbers starting to get implemented in some of the items that need to get addressed that we've identified throughout the facilities assessment here. So all this information here is in your packet, so feel free to digest this information. But I'll, I'll continue through here. And then finally, we just wanted to kind of leave you with a few points, all which we've mentioned prior. So again, our budgets do not include any solutions to your capacity, your educational, educational adequacy or space needs. Those are the next steps that we're about to embark on here. Our budgets are based on the 15-year model that was coordinated with the district, and this is across all 10 buildings, 185 acres and 1.2 gross square feet. Our capital maintenance needs are always ongoing, regardless of the updates, replacements, and improvements that you guys have made in the past. Costs do correlate with the size and age of the buildings and when the building components were last addressed. And then finally, this does not mean that you are going to referendum for the dollar values that we've identified tonight. Hopefully, this just helps you identify the needs and the path forward, which we're going to be talking about here in the coming months.
So next steps. After this presentation, we are planning with the district to talk about that community engagement with also your staff, going to your staff on February 19th, right, Jen? I believe that's the date. We're going to be presenting to staff about the assessment that EUA put together with the costs of just that building, building and site conditions report, and trying to get some feedback on what are the priorities of your staff and certainly priorities of your community. And so you can see that late February, those staff conversations on facilities and that first round of community conversations, look for postcard, ads, digital communications on social media and on your, on your website. You're going to start to see a lot of promotion for these. Share them, invite the community in. The more voices, the better. It'll help us really understand what the priorities are of your community. Then in March, after that first session, it's taking the feedback from everyone that attended both the staff session and the community session, and prioritizing those needs to start to develop what, a potential scenario, really high-level concepts of some of those other needs that EUA presented earlier. So we would come back then in April for a second round of both a staff meeting and a community conversation to further prioritize and refine what your community and your staff would like to see moving forward. And then in late April, that's solution development and refinement. That's when you would start likely seeing costs associated with solutions, all gearing up for whatever that community survey is that we come up with, to help us give a broader scope from your entire community, every household, that would then feed back to you as a board with whatever those survey results are, so that you can make informed decisions and figure out what does that phase one look like. So any questions on either next steps in the process or of the team from a cost perspective?
I appreciate that, really, this is designed not to give a conclusion, but instead is really data to be used and a viewpoint to be used as we consider potential options. I have to admit, I was tempted in some cases to say, well, let's sum up those, you know, those numbers across. But I don't think you can because it doesn't even end in 2039, right? I mean, it goes out forever with maintenance. And so I appreciate the fact that you've done it and you sliced it by time. What in theory would be more urgent or critical if we wanted to address deferred maintenance needs, but also give us an idea that long-term, no matter, no matter what we do, we still have to maintain it. And what does that, what does that take? And so I think that's very important as we deliberate how to proceed from here. Other thoughts, questions?
I just have a.
Kurt?
Couple of questions on Jackson, not to call out. So we're spending, and you're projected over the next 15 years, just to maintain Jackson, over $16 million. And I just say, what are we, so the questions are, are we fixing the ADA issues there? And how many security and safety issues are we fixing? At the end of 15 years, do we still have problems with drop-off at Jackson, security concerns and everything? So you're spending, and I guess I got two questions in there, but I'll throw a comment in there because we're talking $16 million just to get Jackson up to snuff. Three years ago, I think there was a referendum, we could have built a new school for 28 million at a much slower interest rate. So we keep just piling money into an old school, or we figure out a solution. So I'm just saying for a community question, that has to be addressed. So I just want to know your assessment, like, at the end of 15 years, do we still have ADA problems and security problems there at Jackson?
Yeah. So there are things that might be identified as solutions to just fixing up the billing for ADA, but in general, our assessment was strictly keeping your billing up to date. So that does not include any solutions to secure entrances, big picture items, but the next steps, that's what we're going to be doing, is figuring out what you guys want in terms of your billing and creating those into solutions of either a new school or adding on whatever it may be. But the, the purpose of this exercise, what we did tonight, was strictly to give you the information, what it takes to keep your building up and running, and then deliver the next steps for that.
Wasn't sure, Kurt, if you said you had two questions there? I only heard one. You're good. Go ahead.
Again, at the high school too, was another building, 46 million in '25 and '26. What are the major components? I know I could go to that slide, but.
I would, if we go back to the site and scale of the high school, there's roughly 400 and, I think it's like 430,000 square feet within that school, 463. In comparison, the next largest would be Badger, I believe at about 210,000 square feet. And so the, sum of the dollars are very high or appear to be very high, but it's also because there's a lot of square footage. So, you know, it's a very large school in comparison to some of the other schools where Jackson, I believe, is 30, 30,000 square feet. So 16 million, if that was the number, 16 million for 30,000 square feet compared to 40 million for 400,000 square feet.
So I think it's just really important to capture that question and answer it again for everyone. Because you're right, the dollars don't get some of the improvements that you're seeking. Your priorities as a board around safety and security, it does not redesign and give you secure entrances anywhere. It does not do that, not at this time. The board will take these numbers, and it's going to lead you to really hard questions as a team that we want the community weigh in. What is that tipping point on the investment in a building as it exists now? What are the updates that we want to see as we get into conversations around solutions and all of those pieces? So again, just being really clear, as you said, it, it does not include those pieces. Those are pieces that we need to discuss and have in front of us as, as not only a board, but a full community.
Any questions, observations? We appreciate the information, the presentation. Thank you. Obviously, you have a lot more discussion coming up. Thank you. All right. Thank you for coming tonight. Next report is superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
I just wanted to give a, a thank you to our facilities staff for all the late nights and very early mornings, whether they were removing snow, making sure all the mechanicals were up and running and keeping up with the cold snap. We appreciate the efforts. They're ongoing efforts. There's a lot of snow to move from parking lots to get some of those spaces back. Certainly, the weather the next couple of days is helping, but continued maintenance of the sidewalks, salting, et cetera, is, is really appreciated. We've got several snow days built into the calendar, so we don't need to tack those on at the end. But thank you to all of them for their just above and beyond efforts that they've made throughout winter, as it seems like it finally arrived. And as the kids noted, bundle up because, you know, with that little bit of snow, you're, you're coming to school tomorrow. Another conversation I want to make sure the board was aware of was the WIAA, which is the Athletics Association of Wisconsin. They proposed some conference realignment pieces, so we've been engaged in that. There's two conferences. We're in the North Shore Conference for both, but there is a separate football, so I'm talking about the non-football conference. So in December, the Realignment Task Force from the state proposed moving Kewaskom and Plymouth into our North Shore Conference. It was a change that neither district asked for, another set of districts asked for theirs to kind of fade away and join others. It left those two without a home, so to speak. Given the size of all of our schools in our conference, we advocated through both our athletic directors and superintendents and providing testimony that that was not a sound decision. Kewaskom is trending at about 450 students total in there. They're just, wouldn't be competitive, and it could be damaging to their athletics around kind of the whys, because again, it's not a change that either district asked for. So we made it through those rounds of testimonies. On January 11th, the WIAA Task Force approved now a modified conference realignment proposal and places Kewaskom in a Wisconsin Flyaway Conference, which probably more meets their needs geographically and competitively. But it also then placed Plymouth, it kept with us, and it also places Sheboygan South in the North Shore Conference. They also have a Sheboygan North, so it's splitting a district into two conferences, making it 12 schools. So our athletic directors have been meeting, they work with their commissioner, we have a highly collaborative team, and then superintendents meet. We're lining up our next round of testimony that will come on February 8th and other hearings around pros and cons of that decision. So again, there was a lot after that first round of everyone offering up ideas to WIAA, but we would, our advocacy efforts would be for us to remain in the North Shore Conference because as they add and take away, we're just advocating to stay in that group that we're part of currently. That's what our efforts would look like. So I'll just keep you apprised of how those conversations are going. So, and again, our advocacy out of the gate, when they originally, our advocacy was to keep our high schools together so that we wouldn't have a split conference, much like they're doing to Sheboygan. And again, they make proposals generally without asking. We all kind of get them, open them up. We have offered our services as teams to work collaboratively with a little more lead time to come up with a solution. But thus far, we've just gone through rounds of hearings. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of those conversations that we're engaged in. Again, our advocacy efforts would be to remain in the North Shore Conference as we are now. A couple exciting things coming up. Gearing up for high school is this Wednesday, the January 24th at 6:00 PM. So any eighth-grade student, their parents, guardians are invited to gearing up for high schools event. It'll be at the East-West High Schools Auditorium. Your counselors, administrators will be presenting details on how to register for classes, what high school life is like, and all about co-curricular activities. So you can tour the building, check out where everything's located, see some of those things in action. So we'd encourage everyone, even though it seems far away, it's, it's right around the corner when you're registering for the year ahead. Also, we've got a band concert on Thursday, so that's a free West Bend High School's winter band concert, Thursday at 7:00 at the Silver Lining Arts Center at our high schools. And our 4K enrollment opens on January 29th. We held a family information event with nearly 100 people in attendance for that virtual event. If you've missed that, need more information, reach out. We have six locations, four partner organizations that we work with to provide a robust community 4K experience. So just reach out, let us know. But that enrollment opens January 29th. Also highlighting upcoming is our third mental health seminar presented by our Student Services Department. It's on Wednesday, February 7th, 5:00 PM, right here in the boardroom, and the topic is strategies for supporting your child's mental health. So in addition to tips for supporting your child, speakers will give details on self-care for every family member. So that's been a really well-received series, so consider joining for that third one. And tomorrow marks the first day of the second semester for everyone. So today, teachers had, at Workday, students were off today. They were finalizing all those exams and grades from the first semester, and everyone's ready to turn the page on a fresh, new semester tomorrow. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions for Superintendent Wimmer? All right. Thank you for your report. We move next to our discussion items, and our first discussion item is 2024, 2025 student fees. And I believe Mr. Andy Sarno, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, who's coming to the podium, is going to walk us through that item. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information this evening. This is something that we've gotten in the habit of sharing this information for discussion this evening, as well as input, anticipated to bring forward any of the changes of the discussion for action at the next meeting on February 5th. But this is information regarding the 2024, 25 student and school fees for planning purposes, just to keep stakeholders engaged in that process for transparency. Two documents, again, being brought forward to discussion, two documents that I have, I've addressed. The first one is actually an excerpt out of this, out of the course fees, or excuse me, the course document of the high schools. And this incorporates anything that's related to a course directly. As you recall, last year, at this point in time, we made some pretty large changes. We've removed many fees. Anything that still remains in the high school course planning document is related to an item that the student would be purchasing and keeping and using potentially for a career-type, career-type move. No changes from last year to this year. Everything that you're seeing this evening, both at the four K through eight document as well that I have here, is unchanged from the current year that we're in right now as a recommendation for next year. I did keep, just because we did make a change last year, there's this district-wide Chromebook insurance, just for transparency purposes. Again, as of last year, it was previously voluntary, ten dollars. And we did have a decent participation in that, but elected to make a very small increase in those registration fees and then incorporate that Chromebook insurance because quite often, when you don't have it, is when something sometimes happens. So I just wanted to keep that on there, that that is not something that we're charging for anymore. The other item that you will see is if you compare it to last year's document that was brought forward at this level, I think it was brought forward in July prior to the start of the school year, is there was T-shirts and Chromebook, or excuse me, T-shirts and some field trips. We've streamlined this document, and yes, there are some field trips and some T-shirts and some things that are sold. Yearbooks were previously on the list. But I've streamlined this document to truly be, what are we charging as a district? What is there for the students and the families to participate in the program? So fees is an example. Yearbooks are not a fee. They are sold at just about all of our schools, but they're handled separately. So these are, these are directly related to the fees that are recommended at this point in time. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are.
Any questions?
I have a question on the second document. I'm just assuming, I'm assuming it's just a typo, but the yearbook should be double asterisks. I mean, that's not a step, there's not a separate footnote for that somewhere?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing.
Yep, thank you.
That there was a footnote for something else.
I think you've addressed, oh, sorry.
I was going to say, they are making some final changes. So the yearbook cost is not yet finalized for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. So there are some things that were, that were pending charges that they were still looking at. The reason that we're bringing specifically the high schools and we brought that forward last January, again, both for discussion as well as action, is that they're looking at building that course, you know, course selection process very, very soon here. So sometimes in the interest of time, we need to make sure that we identify the process. And there's a couple of those asterisks, so thank you for that.
My point was you had a footnote discussing if someone can't afford to pay the fee. Maybe you can just talk about that generally.
Yeah, so the district for families, there's a process, and it's actually a state process. There's free introduced forms, meal assistance, and it's not just for meal assistance. It's also for any fees, things even like those T-shirts, field trips and things like that. So if the family fills out a free introduced form and they qualify, you do have to acknowledge it that you'll share that information because that's kept very confidential. But you can share that with a very few people, and we have the ability to go into Skyward and waive any of those related fees. The schools take care of their children. If there's a family that just can't go on a field trip or afford one of those, the district makes some pretty, pretty, I think, hopeful efforts to minimize that exposure to those families.
And I appreciate that. And not to use a silly example, but for instance, in science, there are safety goggles. If someone can't afford safety goggles, we're going to get them safety goggles, correct?
Safety goggles, yeah.
Any other questions? So this is a discussion item, so we'll bring this back for formal adoption or consideration at the next meeting.
Correct.
Appreciate it, thank you. Let's see, and I think you have another item coming up, if I remember right.
Coming up in a little bit, I'm going to go sit down for a couple of minutes.
All right, thank you. Next, we have discussion regarding twenty-twenty-four summer school program. And Erin Faust, our Curriculum and Instruction Program Administrator, is going to walk us through that item. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to share this with you tonight. We're going to do a little bit of summary of twenty-twenty-three and then move into the proposal for twenty-twenty-four. Okay. So the first thing we're going to look at is the schedule or the calendar for both last summer and this upcoming summer. We are making one change, and that is it. And that is we are going to remove for this coming summer the term two that we had offered for our kindergarten through seventh grade students. And that is due to low enrollment and then low attendance at that session. So we've offered that the past two summers, we've been looking at our trends, and we're just seeing that the interest isn't where we thought it would be. The rest of the dates are staying relatively the same. Based on our school year calendar, we are going to start on June seventeenth for our in-person classes. That gives our school year teachers time to close out their classrooms, and then our summer school teachers time to transition into those spaces and get things prepared and ready for our students. A few things to note on the bottom for our high school students. Our in-person classes, as I said, will start on June seventeenth. They run for five weeks and will end on July nineteenth. We do continue to offer virtual options for our students. There are two sets of dates there. All of our virtual high school classes will start on Monday, July tenth, or excuse me, Monday, June tenth. Credit advancement classes will run for six full weeks and end on July nineteenth. Students who are participating in a health or physical education class, those classes are full eight-week classes throughout the summer due to the requirements set forth in those course guides. So that is why there are double dates for the high school. The jumpstart dates are on there. They are all going to take place on the same day this year. So Tuesday, August sixth has been identified as jumpstart day. There is a staggered start time for our buildings so that families who have multiple students can make those drop-off and pickups work. The Silverbrook students are having this coincide with their band and orchestra camp. So students on those two day, they're, they're going to take two days at Silverbrook for a shorter amount of time. So a student taking band camp will sign up for period one or two and then alternate with jumpstart on the second time. That way, families are not having to drive multiple times. We tried to streamline this process as much as we could for families. Registration for these will be upcoming in March. So some data to share with you about our enrollment trends. This is data from the past five years. You can see we are holding relatively steady, even including or despite our declining enrollment across the district. We still continue to have a very strong enrollment in our summer school program. Our high school numbers are up quite a bit, and we attribute that to the advantage of having virtual options for our students. We've seen quite a bit of interest in the credit advancement opportunities there. Registration, as I just mentioned, March eighteenth is the day that registration will begin for all students in the district. That will take place in Skyward as it has in years past. One highlight that we really want to focus on is late last spring, we learned that we were the recipient of a federal grant that awarded us about four hundred forty-seven thousand dollars over the last summer and this coming summer to support our program. And that really has allowed us to do some wonderful things for our students. We've been able to offer our elementary reading and math classes at smaller class sizes so that we can really work with students who need the most support. We were able to provide a snack and a bottled water to every student every day for all of our sessions last summer. And we were able to provide transportation for our high school students so that they could take advantage of some in-person opportunities that they may not have been able to access without that transportation piece. So we're very excited to offer those same opportunities again this summer because of that grant. And then one of the things that we do at the end of our summer school program is survey our families, and we survey our staff. So family data is divided into some glows and some grows for us. Ninety-one percent of our respondents indicated that our summer school website and our summer school course guidebook were very helpful to them. That is in direct response to survey data from the previous year that those pieces of communication were not as clear as they could have been. And then also ninety-one percent reported that their students received their first choice of class, which is a really high number. We do offer quite a few opportunities for students K through twelve. Some areas of growth to work on this year. There are some opportunities to clarify those dates, so that's why we're being very clear about the high school dates in particular, what that means and how students go about signing up for their courses. One of the asks was that there was actually more course options for elementary students. We've tended to offer the same courses each summer, and some students have sort of worked their way through all of the courses they've been interested in. So we are excited to offer a few new courses this year. One at Green Tree called a Career Exploration Class. Two at Silverbrook, one a social studies-based course called Around the World in Fourteen Days. And made possible due to a West Bend Public Schools Foundation grant, we have a Camp Lego class that we will be able to offer. So I had one teacher who wrote several curriculum courses for us, and we are now excited to be able to bring these opportunities forward. There is a high school opportunity that is in the works in connection with Tim Harder, which is an E M T course. It is not, all the details are not finalized, but they will be by the time registration is ready to open. And then the last grow for us is there was some inconsistencies in the way that teachers were just welcoming students via communication at the very beginning of the course. So that is something we will address in our orientation for our teachers. But that is something I do want to be, make sure that our students and families know who their teachers are and are welcomed into the summer school program. And finally, I wanted to share this quote with you just as a support for our summer school program because this was something that came up on the staff survey. This teacher said, "I've worked in two other districts with their summer school programs. I genuinely believed that all summer school programs were chaotic and disorganized since I had the same experience in two different districts. However, I was pleasantly surprised by how organized the West Bend Summer Schools, Summer School is. There was great communication between staff, administrators, and families." And that is something we've been working really hard on is to ensure that all of those stakeholders understand the program, feel comfortable accessing the program, and know who to communicate with when they have questions. So I will leave you with some fabulous artwork from our second, third, and fourth graders. It's a great blend of summer and winter, our penguins in their swimsuits. So if you have questions for me, I would be happy to answer them.
Board members, any questions?
I just, I guess I have more of a comment. I'm glad to see that the inconsistencies with the teacher communication with families is going to be addressed because I, I know I had mentioned that too. I have a special needs kiddo and dropping him off at a different school. And like, I didn't really know which door to go to, and I didn't know who the teacher was or anything like that. So I think that'll be something really great to, you know, maybe get an email or something from the teacher ahead of time so you kind of know who to contact about your kiddo. So I think that'll be good.
Thank you.
June?
Just a clarifying question on slide three with the graph about participation and trends over the last couple of years. So from reading this, I am seeing that it is trending up, but I also know how summer school works. And if you're a student attending summer school, you might sign up for two, and it takes the whole morning. So let's say the high school, there's a number eight sixty for the twenty-twenty-three summer. So does that mean four hundred and thirty students took two courses?
It is a blend of all of that. So it is a blend of the number of students who signed up. It is a blend of the number of courses that they are participating in. So some students are participating in one course, some are participating in two. We do have credit recovery options where some students may even earn more credit because they're in that recovery mode. So while the numbers, we do our best to count like the actual number of physical students involved, but that is also a blend of those courses that they're taking.
Other questions? I believe this is a discussion item. Does this come back for board, for board action?
Yes, in the past, they've formally acted on the program before, just before its launch.
Excellent. So we'll see this on the agenda the next time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. All right, with that, we'll move to the next discussion item, school year calendar for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. And Superintendent Wimmer, are you walking us through that?
Yes.
Topic, thank you.
So we have a school calendar committee who convenes. We generally take care of two years at a time on calendars. We want to bring forward and focus on next year's calendar before we get too far down the line. One, there's again some legislation being reviewed. We are forced by state statute, only public schools, not private and pro-kial, to a September one start date. So sometimes people think we have a little more control over our calendar. We do not. So we're bound by that start date. They are talking about wiggling that with some concessions about making sure there's four-day weeks, but right now, we don't have that, that information. We're also looking at and trying to get a handle ahead on some of those mandated changes with Act Twenty and Literacy. It mandates very specific professional development, almost to the tune of forty hours. So building a calendar that's in attention to that. And they're still kind of waiting through what that could look like. So that's why we're bringing one. And the calendar in front of you brings forward because of a mix of that start date and where the winter and Christmas break falls. It's lending itself to either a two-week or a reduced break with the largest impact being the end of year. So generally, we've, we've tried to get out in that first week in June, and you can see there is an option B that, that attends to that and an option A that works in more of those kind of after-break days where we lead with teachers. It's in attention to a couple off during that month. But it's giving you a later end, which would put graduation in the fifteenth of June, which feels, feels very late for some. So we were in attention to that, and we know that sometimes, you know, those couple of weeks in June, maybe kids stopped the first week in June, maybe their attention in, you know, the second week might wane. But we're also in attention to a return on a Thursday, Friday in January might lend itself to a lot of attendance issues. You know, I would fully understand if families want to take those, those two full weeks for Christmas. So again, doing that, we just started talking about pros and cons, got survey of staff with just around a twenty-five percent return. And we wanted to advance the conversation to the board level because we had a feeling that the board might have some very firm opinions on, you know, that winter break, that end date, those pieces, so that we could finalize a recommendation and bring it for you for approval. So with that, we'd really like to hear thoughts from the board on nuances of different opportunities in the calendar for next year. And again, it's a one-year anomaly. The next year, it'll still fall around a more natural two-week break at winter, but the way that Easter and spring break will fall will give you back flexibility in there. So, and one of the things that people might ask or naturally lend itself, well, hey, Jen, team, just take out those professional development days, you know, in, in that January calendar and convert them so I can get back that Thursday, Friday. So if you look at January, you've got Martin Luther King Day, which the board in prior had asked that we be fully off-school, both students and staff. So that has been a shift. Prior, we had students off for recognition of that day and staff worked. So we were respectful of that, and you still need to attend to that semester flip that I was talking about to close out exams, do grading, prepare reports, and prep that next semester. So that's an important workday for our staff. That following February date, the seventeenth, is President's Day, which has regularly been off for families in there as well. So you saw us tightening up in that to gain days where we could and immediate return from spring break for all staff and students. You know, even when our feedback is saying that those were some of the most beneficial days P D-wise, recognizing that we could, we could tighten up there too. So with that said, I entertain questions, comments, your thoughts as board members, maybe with a parent hat on for a couple of you so that the team can work up a final recommendation for your consideration.
What input do we have to share with Superintendent Wimmer? Go ahead.
I'll put my parent hat on.
Go ahead.
I would, as a parent, I would definitely be more in favor of getting out earlier in the summer when it's nice out and having a few days of a shorter break in, you know, over the Christmas vacation. Because that's still like time days or something, which is pretty long, in my opinion. Sure, but that's just my opinion, so.
Chad?
I read through the, in the presentation, I read through all the comments from the different staff members and different things. I think both have some valid points. I think attendance is definitely going to be an issue on January second, and probably the third would be my guess. And it looks like there's kind of some mixed feelings on the professional days as far as when, when they like them timed. But I don't know if there's, you know, with the, with the start date being locked after September first, I think it takes away some of the flexibility. And with the holiday falling on, on the day that it does, I think it's hard to not be, start the break on the twenty-third, so. So yeah, I don't know. I, I don't have a personal preference as to end dates. I'm just looking at the practicality of both what Melanie just said, also combined with, I think attendance will probably be somewhat problematic, but just my thoughts.
Kurt?
So I'm, I'm in favor of an earlier exit on June sixth to channel my Nancy Justman, who I think we had a later for the history. We had graduation that, that week of second week in June. We tried to bump it up to the first week in June, and I thought we got great comments. So I was in favor of it then, I'm in favor of it now.
Thank you.
June?
I, I do think in the draft, the B option, they're like, to echo what others are saying, there could be some attendance issues, but I think we could address it using like, there's pre, pre-plans in place that you can work with your teachers and figure out what.
Sure. We, again, in even attendance law, families absolutely have the ability to have some pre-planned absences that you're talking about. We would survey, make those things available, and just support and follow the same procedure if families wanted to be absent on that second and third, just to notify us. Because again, I would expect a lot maybe traveling or attending, you know, to vacations at that time.
Can I just ask how, how warm it gets in the building in summers and how attentive the children are in the month of June?
Sure. They can get up to, my office alone can get eighty-six degrees. So you certainly have, sometimes people make assumptions that all schools or buildings have air conditioning, and they don't, they have pockets. So if, if you're dealing with some significant heat, you're generally not too bad in June. It's when you start back in August. You know, I wouldn't want to be starting at the top of August for a school year, even if the law allowed it, because that's, that's when you feel it the most. But yeah, certainly, they, they get a little warmer. You see our summer school sites aligned to where we have opportunities for air, those kinds of things.
Other thoughts? Kelly?
I do, my mom hat says I like the long Christmas break because I like to hunger in and not do anything on those two breaks. However, I do like getting out, and I appreciate that the response on the survey indicated too that they prefer the going back for a few days. So I would have to vote the, the draft B.
Is there, is there any way to, I'm sure you guys looked at this, but there's no way to make up two days anywhere else? There's no other flexibility?
You can, sure.
How would you make up? So how would you be able to?
You would have to remove one of the yellow dates. So as I highlighted, I can't advocate for January twenty-one to be removed from the calendar. That's the semester workday that's sorely needed. You could shift how that is. You could return to Martin Luther King Day being observed by families, but the board made strides a couple of years ago to make that fully off in recognition of that day. You could look at February seventeenth, which is President's Day. That's been off. There is a return for staff. Again, that was the one thing that came through in both the professional development as well as the calendar survey was kind of the start back. You could remove April twenty-first, you could remove October eighteenth. So those are your, your two days unless you wanted to step into the tradition of President's Day.
And the dates before September don't matter as far as attendance?
Because they're, yeah, they're student days that we need. So one of the things that the calendar committee and myself would be remiss to not point out is you're dealing with conferences in October. That's your natural conference window. They're staying late, working late, doing those things, and dealing with some initial progress reporting as well. And then you also have some touchpoints throughout the year. So those days could be removed, but we also look for stretches for kids and staff to have some natural breaks. Again.
How many snow days do we have built in?
There's generally at least three. So it depends on the level, but I have at least three, four on some levels.
Can we borrow a snow day and just make it?
I already have them cooked in here, so they would extend your year.
Gotcha.
So they're in there, and I don't need to add. So if I were to add them or calculate differently, I have to add days to this calendar, which I don't have. I don't have to give.
It's worth a shot.
So yeah, your, your dates that you have to play with are any of the gold. So again, October eighteenth, January twenty-first, February seventeenth, and April twenty-first.
Is there a way we could get input from staff?
We can't.
On what they, because I, I mean, it doesn't affect me as much as, I mean, those gold days don't affect me, other than being jealous when people I know are off. But, but the, but I want, I want to make sure the teachers, you know, the staff get what they need. And so if those dates are important to them and they'd rather just have the schedule look like it is, then I would support that.
What I'll do is, and we were prepared for that, we just wanted, we didn't want to prep something that the board wasn't going to support in some way. So with, with that information, I mean, I'll continue to take feedback from additional board members, but we'd prep that both ways and ask again for their input, and then that would help us finalize our recommendation. But again, we didn't want, as a committee, to get too far down a path that wasn't going to be supported in the end. One of the things, and I did not bring this here because I didn't know how the conversation was go, your 4K calendar, remember that's a four-day program that goes in and there's already no Fridays? So if we were to settle on a return of Thursday, Friday, they usually have a later start and earlier finish. We would work that out so they naturally get the two weeks. We would not ask those families to refer, return for a singular day. So we would bring that alongside. So we'll, we'll bring that with this when we have a draft. Any other feedback or things that you want me to look at?
I just got to point out one more day, the November twenty-seventh.
Oh, sure.
That's a private industry. I don't know any company that offers that day off. I know when my kids were in school, they, they had that school day off, so I can't remember the exact year it started. But to me, that's a workday in the country, and it's a day that, I know it's convenient for people traveling, but it's probably a small percentage of people traveling that day. That's just my comment.
Well, and that way too, it doesn't take away from a professional development day. It would still get the workdays in there and have, count towards a day. I like that idea.
Yeah, it's a good option, I suppose. With the option, I suppose, right, that maybe if it's not a school day, I think you had mentioned before that a parent can arrange an excused absence for a child in the event of travel?
Yeah, I think for us around here, it's hunting. There's a little bit more when you're leading into hunting season and having off and navigating those absences, but same thing, no different than the January one. So we can take it back to committee and kind of look at that as an opportunity as well, and we'll put that out to staff. We'll have time. We were prepared to do that. So we'll have time to garner that feedback, reconvene, and for the next board meeting, bring back a recommendation for you to consider.
I was gonna say, it just sounds like, generally speaking, the board seems to be more in favor of the earlier, the earlier, and the earlier dismissal in June.
But if we could find a way to get the second and third, that'd be great.
We would love that, too.
I would, I would trade the twenty-seventh for one of those days.
Or twenty-two.
Okay. I'll certainly put that forward, and then we'll bring something back for you to consider. Thank you.
And if any board member has an additional thought or revelation between now and then, they can reach out to you, correct? Great, thank you. All right, we move now to action items. So there are a number of action items, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Wimmer, that we had talked about or that you had previewed before. Let's see, out of several items for out-of-state travel and such. So I think what I'll do is we'll go through these. I'll ask if there's any change, and then unless there are questions or comments from board members, we can maybe take these in fairly rapid succession. Our first action item is out-of-country travel, Spanish trip. Superintendent Wimmer, any changes since last?
No changes. We foreshadowed this in our last board report.
Any questions from board members? Hearing none, I would move to approve the out-of-country travel for the Spanish class students as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Motion and second to approve the out-of-country travel for Spanish class. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That motion carries. Our next item, out-of-state travel for Winter Guard. Superintendent Wimmer, any changes? Same as before, it was foreshadowed?
No changes, foreshadowed and very consistent, as they're, they're very good at competing, so they often qualify.
Any questions for board members? Move to approve the out-of-state travel for the Winter Guard as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll give that one to John. Motion and second to approve out-of-state travel for the Winter Guard. Final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, that motion carries. We move then to the 2024, 2025 Facilities Capital Projects, and that was presented by Mr. Harder last time. Superintendent Wimmer, any changes from the information presented?
No, Mr. Harder presented the next two, both facilities and technology. There's no changes. He apologizes he wasn't available this evening, but also foreshadowed that, but no changes to either.
Questions from board members? Hearing none, I would move to approve the 2024 or 2025 Facilities Capital Projects as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Kelly, motion and second to approve the Facilities Capital Projects. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That motion carries. And then the 2024, 2025 Technology Products, also presented by Mr. Harder. Superintendent Wimmer, any changes to the information?
No changes.
Board members, any questions? Hearing none, I would move to approve the 2024, 2025 Technology Projects as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve the Technology Projects. Final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you, that motion carries. Next are enrollment projections for open enrollment seats, and Superintendent Wimmer, I think you presented this last time.
Correct, no change.
No changes? Any questions from board members? Hearing none, I would move to approve the enrollment projections for open enrollment seats as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve the enrollment projections for open enrollment. Final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you, that motion carries. Next is revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through December thirty-one, 2023, and welcome Mr. Sarno back to the podium to walk us through this item.
Thank you. I do appreciate this opportunity. Typically, this is on the monthly consent, but quarterly, I have the opportunity to present just a little bit more detailed information to you. The debt rating agencies, our last one, Standard and Poor's, they mentioned this opportunity, both the consent as well as this more detailed dialogue, because that's what's meant to happen during this. Just question and answer and just make sure, because of that transparency and accountability, comparing this year's budget to actual through a certain point in time, this is through December thirty-first, as well as the previous period through that same exact period in time, just looking for outliers, making sure that we're seeing if everything is hitting exactly the way that we believe it to do so. So I have a six-page document organized by funds. It totals at the top. There are duplicated expenditures, but we are about a hundred-million-dollar business. But when I take a look at all of the funds in the aggregate, because that's what this is, it totals up everything, even though we do transfer money from one fund to the next on occasion, but we're a little over a hundred and ten million dollars. I'd like to point out on the top of, the top of page one, we did have a budgeted deficit this year, and it's specific to our debt, primarily due to our debt. We're done levying for those monies, and we're making payments for the next couple of years. And so the large majority, about four and a half of that five-million-dollar debt, deficit, is due to our debt. And so we're going to be using that, so when we take a look. But really another, an important part is that when we take a look at our cash flow, the money coming in versus the money going out, year-to-date, we have just a little over nineteen million dollars of revenues through all of our funds and about thirty-six and a half million dollars of money going out. So when we take a look at fund balance, the dollars that we have in our equity accounts, this is one of those large reasons, because there's a couple of times during the year when that, those, we have an inherent deficit, and so the reserves are used for the purpose of cash flow and making sure that our payroll and the bills that we pay are in good standing. So I just wanted to point that out because at this point in time, it's about seventeen and a half million dollars. So back to the point behind this, green revenues, that kind of orange salmon color expenditures in some of the funds, I break out the category, but it's this year, budget to actual spent-to-date, and then last year's at that same time with the percentages. And I really like to take a look at those aggregate amounts. So when we take a look at our general fund, which a little over eighty-five, eighty-four million dollars, our revenues are trending about one percent better than they were last year, meaning that we're getting our claims out, following through with our sources of revenues. And meanwhile, and not a large variance, but about a one percent decrease comparing our budgeted activity and our expenditures compared to last year. And so nothing standing out at this point in time. I did make some notes where, just as an example, our equipment, this year we had a small budget, but we're now coding more things to that because we have larger purchases, and some of these items will be cleaned up through a spring budget amendment process. But nothing standing out as it relates to any identifiers, any concerns that we have in the general fund. Next group of areas are Fund Twenties. We have our Student Gift Fund. That's primarily student dollars that they raise at that level, or if somebody does gift the district dollars. But both the revenue is trending considerably better than where I thought it would at this point in time. Expenditures are a little bit higher, but again, we're outpacing on that revenue side. So it just continues to tell me that we have some pretty active students with their clubs and their activities through the year. And again, we'll make sure that we monitor that to understand where we plan on landing at year-end. There's a fund balance that exists, but typically that's for purposes identified by clubs, and so we'll make sure that we monitor that and understand the spending as well as the remaining revenues. Fund Twenty-seven is our Special Education. This is a fund that we have to provide these services. We're acquired for the individual educate, IEPs for students with services. That large transfer, just under ten million dollars, that's not a transfer that we make until year-end when everything is finalized. So revenues generally are lagging in this fund. However, we continue to have those expenditures, the salaries and the benefits throughout the year, but we are current with our claims, making sure that those federal dollars, state dollars, that we receive those on a timely basis to help out with our cash flow. Fund Twenty-nine, which is our Head Start, continue to be very consistent with that, even as some of the federal dollars are sunsetting. Next area, which is our debt, and this is where I referenced, we have yet to make our final payment in our non-referendums. We have one last payment of a million dollars, no interest for this last issue, but that will happen in April. The only activity with revenue is a little bit of interest earnings that we will receive this year. Fund Thirty-nine, which is our referendum debt, again, we have dollars set aside for this. We have a typical fall payment with principal and interest, and then we'll have an April one as well, and that's all according to our repayment schedule that we have with Some of the areas that we have money set aside for our facilities, so we have both our Fund Forty-One, one-point-eight million dollars that we've set aside, as well as some interest that we will be planning on earning. Generally speaking, our auditors take a look at that interest income, and interest is doing fairly well for the year among all the different areas that we have our fund balance. Across just about every area, we've been doing what we can to maximize that. I've been now told, and I went to a sectional last week and spoke to individuals at a conference, that may be a little bit short-lived. So as we have the Federal Reserve, they've already announced there's, there's going to be probable rate, interest rate drops in the 2024 period. That then may adversely impact the net that we've been receiving over the last twelve-month period. So it started coming up in the last fiscal year. We've been doing well this year, and so really want to get an understanding of where we have dollars, where we need them, where we need them to be liquid if we're going to plan on using them, and is it possible then to take a look at doing some, and by longer term, I just don't mean very liquid that we have easy access, but maybe even some CDs that go out twelve, eighteen months that are going to hold some of those interest rates flat, even though the interest rates are planning on dropping with our more liquid areas. So really doing an analysis this year to make sure that we have that, and these are three funds that are impacted by that, so the dollars. I do have money in our, that middle box, Fund Forty-Six. This is that other trust. I do have three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars budgeted on the expenditure side, but we don't plan on touching that unless the one on the top, Fund Forty-One, that we use all of those dollars that are budgeted. And at this point in time, we've only spent one-point-six out of the two-point-four budgeted, and so we wouldn't need to use that Fund Forty-Six unless we fully utilize that other area. Just keeping in mind as well, there's a little bit of interest with our Fund Forty-Nine, but that's for the five-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for the Barton Proceeds sale. Fund Fifty, which is our Nutritional Services Program, this is an area that we have fund balance that currently exists. We need a spend plan for that. We do have a small deficit for equipment and program enhancements, making sure that we're offering good quality meals to our students and staff, but trending very well. We're making We're making sure, just as an example, I think on Friday, and I'm noticing that the meal and local revenues is a little bit less than it was last year, but just late last week, after I created this document, and I didn't want to amend it, but we just booked another $200,000. So trending a little bit better, but we're making sure that we're monitoring that activity throughout the year. How are we spending those dollars, and indeed are those improving the quality of the meals? Fund 73, this is another one. When we take a look, the health insurance, the cost, that orange area, trending a little bit higher than last year, and making sure that we're monitoring that, both on the health continuation for the retirees that are in that, as well as now some TSA contributions that have been made, just making sure that we're monitoring that and making sure that we understand how we're going to end the year. But those retiree health continuation costs are noticeably higher than they were last year at this point in time. How are we going to end the year? We have fund balance in this account, but making sure that we understand it, pretty important. Fund 80, community services, anything outside of the typical school day. We disclose all of the programs and the costs at the annual meeting, but trending well, I don't have any concerns within our Fund 80. Last piece, we have our Fund 99, so we're the fiscal agent for a few sports. The season is underway, so the revenues are there because we've done our due diligence with invoicing the participating school districts, as well as making our own transfer as well. Then on the expenditure side, we're going to start seeing more activity as those seasons begin. So this is as of December 31st. They weren't quite in the full swing of things at that point in time. So, all in all, short of making sure that we're monitoring cash flow, that we're getting interest income where possible and maximizing that, I don't have any outline concerns, but I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Great, what questions do we have for Mr. Sarno? Kurt?
So we have, so we have six months left in the fiscal year, and just parking aside the debt payment, which I view as a good thing. Are we going to have a balanced budget this year trending or a potential surplus?
Yeah.
Is that where we're trending?
Yeah, so we do, and this is the interesting part. So right now, the fiscal year, this represents the midpoint. When you take a look at the actual school year, teachers begin getting paid and their benefits begin being accrued as of September. So when you take a look at it, we only have three months of the nine-month school year. So the teachers' pay, as well as the teachers' benefits, go through the end of August. So keeping in mind, we have ourselves covered. We're still in the period of having those ESSR dollars. So yes, to answer your question, this year we will end in the black, barely, because we have the ability to claim to get up to that point prior to the auditors arriving in August. So we have the ability to do that. Does that answer your question? Yep, yeah. The question is, this is what we're trying to understand, we're self-insured with health insurance as well as dental, I believe with health and dental. Is that accurate, Superintendent Wimmer? I believe so. How are we going to end that fiscal year? So we're, with our health insurance, we're on a calendar year basis, and so there's some reports that we received mid-August to wrap up and make adjustments to the fiscal year. Again, that ends on June 30th. So just making sure, again, that we're understanding that and those claims that are coming in, and where are we in that cycle with people actually using our health insurance? That's one of the big variables. So spending extra time this spring, making sure that we nailed that. Because what happens this year rolls forward to next year, and understanding those dollar amounts and how we're budgeting and planning for future years out is just as important. Hope that makes sense.
That's good. We're watching the risks to a balanced budget, but so far, it's looking good.
Yep, we have ourselves covered.
Great.
Other questions? Observations? If not, this is an action item. I'd move to approve revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through December 31, 2023 as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kurt? Thank you. Motion and second to approve revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through 12/31/23. Final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any oppose? All right, thank you, that motion carries. Appreciate the report. We move then to future agenda items and our board meeting calendar. So upcoming meetings include, on January 23rd, which is tomorrow, Curriculum Committee meeting, 4:00 p.m. here at the Education Service Center. On February 5th, a regular board meeting, 5:30 p.m. here at the Education Service Center. February 13th, Policy Committee, 4:00 p.m. Education Service Center. And February 19th, regular board meeting, 5:30 p.m. Education Service Center. Those are the scheduled meetings. Again, I encourage individuals to check for the posted times and dates, the official postings in case there's a change. Melanie?
I believe the Curriculum Committee meeting tomorrow is actually at 4:30.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that.
Missed a little typo there.
4:30, no, that's all right. Okay. Any other questions on the board meeting calendar? And thank you for the correction. Right, hearing none? Let's see. All right, our next agenda item then, it looks like we've reached, oh, items for follow-up and communication. Sorry, this is at the bottom, my printout. Do we have any items for follow-up and communication?
I have one. I was just wondering if we could get, and I don't know if this is something that has to come back to a board agenda or not, but I've been approached and would like to look into what it would take, or maybe explain the process of how we can turn one of our clubs into a recognized sport for the purpose of lettering, for, you know, for competition, that kind of stuff. So specifically regarding guard, winter guard, color guard. So that's a highly competitive, well-attended club that we have that really participates and functions no differently than a sport from how I understand it. And so I would, I would just like to be responsive to that person and be able to maybe communicate that to the public as well as how we turn clubs, like Trail Sharks, for example, would be an example of how we've done that in the past. And so I don't know how that works, but thank you.
There's a process, so I'll meet with you after, and I'll get that person's information.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Great, other items for follow-up or action? Follow-up and communication, pardon me. All right, hearing none, we've reached the end of our planned agenda. We do have an item that's appropriate to discuss in executive session. So I'd move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government or body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, employment and compensation. Is there a second? Thank you, Kelly. We have a motion and second to adjourn into executive session. If memory serves, this requires a roll call vote. So I will call the roll.